Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of the Madera County Arts Authority. I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and hopefully, we're going to have a productive meeting this afternoon. Are there any additions to the agenda?
No, there's been no additions to the agenda.
Any comment on the agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I still move the agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Cecilia, would you lead us in the pledge? Did you like that? Okay, item number three is public comment. We have time set aside for any members of the public who wish to make comment on anything not on the board agenda. Do you have something? Raise your hand and come forward. Seeing none, pose the public comment and move to item number four, public session. You've received the minutes for the July meeting, and we have them here for your consideration and approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, no. Yes, we just need a motion to approve. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I still move.
A second?
I'll second.
Any comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motions of minutes are approved. We have item 4B, which is the presentation of the Madera County Arts Authority Treasurers Report. It's included in your packet. Do you have any comments?
It looks like it's pretty well self-explanatory, and the difference between what we have contributed and the balance is our interest earnings year-to-date. Other than that, it...
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any comments about the questions about the treasures report? Okay, then we're going to move on to the real reason for our meeting today, which is item number 4C, and that's a continued discussion and consideration of entering into an agreement with QK Incorporated to provide consultant services to incorporate the arts into downtown Madera. If you can remember back to January, that's when we had the discussion and had the representatives here from QK. At that time, we didn't know there was going to be a pandemic, but we wanted to get additional information, so we postponed that, the decision on that. In July, we took that question up again and had our ad hoc committee of, I think it was Salinas, Poitras, and Mr. Wieland, who did some work with our QK folks and to bring to us an updated scope of work for our consideration evening. So you have in your packet the proposal from QK in your packet, a potential contract for consultant services in your packet, and then if you want a reminder of the major things, we wanted a consultant to do the scope of work that we put out in our original consultant proposals there. Our original scope of work included working on vision, which has been established, and then looking to see how feasible the projects are that came out of that vision and to help us further define a cultural arts center for Madera, including what the physical environment is of our town and where we would place things and what it would all look like, how it's incorporated into the plan of the city. And then some help in how we might get that funding aside to build. Okay? So with that, oh, I was going to... Salinas?
We're making copies of the signed agreement. I think you ran upstairs. I also am emailing staff upstairs to get some copies for you, so just give us a couple minutes.
Okay, then I'm going to ask Mr. Poitras and Mr. Wieland if you have any comments you want to make while we're waiting.
Actually, to speed this along, Mr. Quering from QK is here, and Quering, perhaps I could ask you a subs... one substantive question. I reread what you provided under a cover letter dated January 20th, and as I just, when I got here, saw the proposal underneath it in August 20th. Cover letter, I glanced through the new, compared it to the old, and well, I saw changes to most of the paragraphs. I didn't see anything substantive or anything that was major that jumped out, but I'd like to hear from you. Did I miss anything? Why the changes or what's happening?
If I could address the change like that opportunity.
Sure.
The... We also didn't find on the pandemic. It's caused some changes to how we approach some things, but it's more procedural than style. And let me go back a little bit. I think a critical piece of what we wanted to do is to get both as much input and sense from stakeholders, from the community. There was a very large, significant community engagement part to really draw the essence of the vision that has been started, and how do we draw that together into an overall vision, and then an action plan to deliver those action steps to you for how we can start to implement that. What has happened with the pandemic, some of the traditional methods that you would do that, we just don't do. You don't have a big group of people. We wouldn't stuff this full of people and have a big presentation and be out in three hours, but there are a lot of different ways. One, for certain groups, we have found that social interaction through Zoom and Teams have been very successful. The advantage to having waited six months is that I wouldn't have said we really were quite sure how we were going to address that four months ago. We do a lot of work with general plans and special plans, things like that, and so it's really refined our approaches. There are some very good ways to utilize that. There are some very good ways to use technology, but also, for example, you can have a day-long presentation at some location where people are socially distanced, and it may be a little more staff-intensive for us, but that's fine. You can have people there to answer questions, talk about some visions for the, for the community, how the arts center would work, and collect it on a one-on-one where people can come and go instead of having the big group meetings. So there are different methods that we would still employ, but they would be more apropos to the environment we're in, and we've gotten that pretty well refined. I think we're probably, in the interim, we've refined our, our view too. I think we were, as an entity, a little more focused on structures or buildings, and a piece that has become clear to us, just in our chance to reach out to some folks in the last six months, has been there's another piece that we want to make sure is in there, and that's how do you just incorporate the arts, visual and performing into a broader portion of the community. How do you get that? How do you help the community assess which facilities you want to do, how you want to do them? And in other arenas, general plans, things like that, how do you bring the arts into all those sorts of areas of Madera County life and the community that, that you have here? So I think our changes haven't been significant. It's given us a chance to get a little more refined, and we're still looking forward to taking on the, taking on the effort and delivering to you a, a useful action plan for the future and how you move this forward and recognize and fulfill the vision that we've seen from all the different places, through the Arts Council, through the authority, through all the different groups that have been here, and how do we pull that all together for you? So we're looking forward to the opportunity.
Do you still anticipate having Mike Ford work with you?
Yes, Mike is still a vital member. He just couldn't be here today. Mike has a great amount of background for any pieces related to how to do fundraising. His background is both in medical and arts and different things like that. He's been a fundraiser for 40 years, and he, he's forgotten more about the nuts and bolts of fundraising than I will ever know. And so he has basically made sure that he called me and said to communicate to them that however you need me to work on the project, he's he calls it slightly retired, not semi-retired. He only takes on projects that he wants to anymore. He used to have to do projects to pay all the bills. He doesn't need to. Now he does the things he wants to do. And this is one that he wants to work with us and with the community on, so we're happy to have Mike with us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. I was, you know, during our meeting that we had, you know, we talk a lot about, again, some of the changes and what a cultural arts center would look like, and I think that's one of the main things that was refined here. For instance, in our request for proposal back in January, I guess it was, it talks about vision and operations. It says they have envisioned, and this is from us, request proposal from a consultant, a future culture and performing arts center that serves as a centerpiece of the community's future growth. They did any cultural diversity, and I the cover page from QK says that the action plan that authority can use for future implementation of arts-related downtown initiatives, and I like that because it's more open to what we can do or what is within the realm of possibility in the near term versus the future term. And so that could mean a lot of things. It could mean, you know, a cultural arts center. It can mean activities. It can mean, you know, really taking advantage of some low-hanging fruit, you know, in the near term rather than something way out in the future. So, so I do like that part of it.
Well, we, we found over time when you're basing a project and a report and an action plan on what you are getting, collecting in terms of input from the community, but also from some experts who we can bring to the table, oftentimes, it's how you ask the question. Now, just trying to think of a good example. If you walk up to someone and say, how large of a, of a youth football league should we start? Well, the question has now defined you are going to start a youth football league. The only question remained, is it going to be small or large? That shouldn't be the question. The question should be, you know, are, are youth sports involvement important, and how should we go about it? So I, I think it helped us think this through a little better. We stepped back a little bit. We want to make sure that whatever action steps we recommend are going to drive the vision that really Madera wants and can fulfill and and bring any expertise we can to the process.
Hey, community, talking about Madera County.
I'm sorry, can you speak directly into the microphone or we don't pick you up on the recording? Thank you, sir.
When you say community, you're talking about Madera County.
Correct.
So we've got a lot of people, a lot of voters up there in the Oakhurst area. A big percentage of voters are up there. So when you go out and communicating with groups, you're looking at arts people and stuff like that, group committees, but you've got a lot of other groups. You've got Rotary, you've got Elks, you've got, you've got a vast community here, and you're going to have to have the support of all the community. Because this is going to be in Madera. It's not going to be up in Oakhurst where you got a lot of voters. So that's one, that's one of my concerns. And the other concern is, being we're in this pandemic right now and everything's, you know, unsecure, I think maybe it's a little early. Maybe if you wait till this is over before we go out, so people have a little more confidence.
Well, I, I think for, for getting input and devising a plan, I don't think it's too early. I think if you were going to say we're gonna, we've now got our plan in place and we want to start on something. We have something very specific. I would encourage you to kind of see what the fallout would be through the, through the pandemic process, but I think the planning process can move ahead. Reaching out to different groups isn't, if you told me four or five months ago, is it going to be possible to, in the pandemic environment, I would have questioned that. That's going to be a little tough, but we've caught, we've come up with ways to do that, whether it's using technology or other methods, or inviting people in on a smaller basis as you need to, and, and reaching out to Oakhurst and the mountain communities is, is not impossible. When we talk about the results of the study, the results of the study could very well be initiatives that do have an effect on the mountain community, other places. There's a lot of ways you can involve the arts in future development that, if you build it into your development plans, that might affect Madera or, excuse me, Oakhurst, Chauchoa, the whole county. Yes, the focus has been a lot on the downtown and the buildings and facilities that are here, but I think there's a way through a properly designed plan that you can begin to drive the impact of the arts on life in a broader area, and that's something that we're hoping to help that.
I know. We try to do a school bond. We try to look at our different parts of our community, make sure we've got a little bit for everybody's. Everybody's, a lot they're getting a piece of.
Well, we're not, we're not voting on, we're not here to talk about a specific bond issue or a specific dollar event. This is not part of a dollar event. This is to get the plan in place and the action steps and the vision cohesively put together, because right now we have, we've, we've gotten pieces of a variety of things, so we're not, there, there may be a suggestion in there that you do have to fund something, but that would, that would be a whole, that would be a different process than what we're talking about. Funding, actually funding something that, you know, we're not talking about. When we talk about a fundraising plan, that would be just a plan for private sector fundraising that might facilitate some aspect of it, but not a bond issue or anything like that. We may, we may suggest that you consider one, but that could be just a small piece of it, and I'm, I'm not trying to project that at all. We haven't done our research yet.
I'd like to comment generally. One of the reasons for having representatives from local government on the, the Arts Authority is to address that question. That is, Poitras represents the county Board of Supervisors, so there's five of them that represent the whole county. So how do they get their input and their particular community net and whatever we're going to do with arts, arts centers? That's their job. And then Cece from the city is interested in how this is going to work to develop our economy here. I think that's why we have, I'm together.
I'm just trying to give him problems. The people in Chauchoa, they don't, they don't want to be part of Madera. Got a people up in the mountains, they're kind of the same way. They got their community. They travel that 41 into Fresno all the time. I'm hardly coming. I'm, that's just kind of laying it out, some of the things you're going to have to look at.
Absolutely. And, and I have in my, in my own career been involved in things like transportation measures when you're trying to raise a a sales tax initiative for a transportation measure. Those are very different studies, and you're exactly right. You really do have to make sure that you're getting the voters and you're getting the piece of the pie and all that. That's a, that's a very, very different sort of a thing. And it, and you're, you're right about doing that. That, that could, those can be real challenges. Everybody has to feel like they're getting something. It's a different approach. For example, there may be ways through the county general plan that could suggest changes. It could be done to really help strengthen the arts in the mountain community. How could the advancement of the arts in Oakhurst be used to strengthen Oakhurst and the economy up there and, and the visitor? If that, if the visitor community is very important, and I know it is, I was up there this last weekend chasing around and spending a little time at Bass Lake just up the road. You know, that, that could be a whole different item or piece of what you have to make sure you consider in a plan of this.
Other thoughts? I'd like to pursue just a minute more of the scope of involvement. And I say that because I hope we don't redo the same process we did where we had large numbers of people from the community developing plans, coming up with those plans. And then we've had several cultural arts committees look at this whole development of a cultural arts center from a variety of points of view, questioning how this stakeholder engagement, and then we had the whole visioning process, where we had the city, the county, and representatives from the community together. How is this different from what we've done over the last?
I think we can build on it, and, and I think you have a, the one thing that was accomplished through that whole performing arts study and the visioning was you got a lot of interest going. It, it raised a lot of expectations. It can be good, but at the same time, I think there was a piece of it that might have been missing, and that's just from a cursory review. I'm not passing judgment, but that's the whole side of, is, is the financial side, is it a doable entity? And so it may have taken on a life of its own. Now that we know so much more, and even in the, in a post-corona environment, the, the concept of raising 60 or 70 or $80 million, whatever number you were attaching to that for one facility, the, the question would be for the community, is that the best way to really bring the arts activity into the community? Is that going to accomplish what you're trying to get to? Or is a more diffused approach where you have a cultural arts center or, and some other ways of bringing the arts into the community, activities, uses of the general plan revitalization, bringing it into development plans, making it's part of more of the everyday life and not just focusing on the facility. I think as long as people understand that that may be a healthier approach. We do have to drive the discussion a little bit, so we don't kill, but we don't, but we don't want to kill their input, but there, there has to be some recognition of the practicalities of doing that. It's art, performing arts centers are extremely difficult to pay for. There is very little public money for that in any community, and so that would have to be a private thing. That's a very, that's a very difficult lift, and so I think that needs to be revisited and then focused on instead, what can we do to still get to a broad role for the arts in the community that isn't just tied to a performing arts center? I've talked to a number of people on the performing arts side, and that's a difficult number. I, I think I've shared this one example with a couple of people. Reedley College has been working on the McClarty Art Center. I think it's 28, predicted to be 28, $30 million. They already have two-thirds of it paid for out of a community college bond issue. They, it's already been named the McClarty Center because they, somebody donated several million dollars, and they've been working on the rest of the fundraising for four and a half years, and they expect it to be at least two or three more before they have the money put together for that. And that's a smaller facility than this, and it's a very difficult lift with a lot of well-heeled people in the community already buying into it, but it's a tough road. We want to make sure that we give Madera something that will really drive the arts and, and get you to a point where the arts are appreciated in the community and enhance the community, enhance the economic life as well as the, kind of the everyday community life of the community.
Other questions? I'm going to turn it out if there's... Salinas, do you have? Add? Oh, we have other members of the community. Common thoughts from the community?
Happy to give up the mic.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the, you have the new scope of work that's been refined in front of you. You have a sample of an agreement for consultant services. QK has signed, so it would be us to the, but R and R has a board here.
I've got a question. Was that contract signed by council? Not signed, but drafted?
Yes, correct. So we presented to the authority probably back in January, a model agreement that was based off standard, and actually, we've engaged in, from our office, at QK in these types of agreements before. They're reputable, respectable, and don't, don't ask for everything in the kitchen sink. And so in terms of the contract that we submitted to them, you'll see that the term is for six months. The scope of services is attached, as you've seen. The amount of compensation is $60,000. There are termination provisions, and really, the only negotiations that we had in terms of the contract that we provided them is they wanted a bifurcated indemnification provision, which is understandable, and they've asked for that in the past. It, it, it was them covering us all for indemnification, but if the Arts Authority, they would not cover, and it's for insurance purposes, any, anything that the authority does, which is why I'll be talking a little bit later in, in terms of insurance for this authority. And they also asked the other, and oh, the other revision that they requested was to retain partial ownership of documentation, and we also had their business name incorrect. They do business as QK, but their legal title was changed, so no substantive from our perspective revisions to the agreement that we gave them. But from our perspective, we would recommend that this is a okay contract to enter into if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay, contract with QK, huh?
Yeah.
Well? Well, Dr. O'Keane, are you, are you willing to receive a motion relative to this issue?
Yes.
Then I'll, I'll be particular because we're coming to the meeting. I read paperwork from January, which included the scope of services and fee estimate, which have been changed. They're now part of a cover letter that's dated August 20 instead of January 20. Pages one through three underneath the cover letter, that document, plus I had read it before coming here, contract, agreement for consultant services provided earlier this year, and the, the contract provided today for the first today. I'm satisfied with the changes, so for purposes of my motion, I'm going to focus on two documents. Pages one, two, and three of the scope of services and fee estimate provided underneath the August 20, 2020. Letterhead from QK plus your revised agreement provided by our council by Amber Adams, Vice President of UK. My motion is that we enter into an agreement, the agreement for consultant services I've mentioned, to hire UK for the scope and services with the fee as provided in the, that document by the same name underneath the cover letter today, not today, but last week, pages one. Hope that makes sense.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Do I do the board first or the?
I think you've done those both. I think it's a call for the vote unless there's any further questions from the board.
I got a question. Pages one through three, whole contract. Oh, this one here?
Yeah, underneath the August 20, 2020 letterhead.
Has a contract.
Whole contract. Any other questions? Okay. Then I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Well? Well, we're looking forward to working with you and Amber. Let's see. How do we get started? Do we have a subcommittee with, or do you work with Nick? I'm sorry, could you, I'm going to ask you to come back up, so.
Reports or attend the monthly meetings. So, we will be doing that. If you had one or two members or a subcommittee you wanted to have meet with us on a liaison basis, we're planning to meet with everybody on the authority, the arts council, as well as the authority for, in the engagement process. And also using that input, one of the other goals is to engage with those folks to find out who else we are supposed to be engaging through to get a comprehensive view of the community. We know the community pretty well. We've had a long presence in Madera, but you always have to go back and make sure you are getting good coverage of everybody. So, if there are members of the arts authority that you would like to stay on a more day-to-day basis or meet more regularly with, we're more than happy to do.
Okay.
That would be your call.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Solinas, I believe you're going to be our point person with... Okay. Any other questions about how we're going to? I'm hoping that you're going to be able to meet representatives from the board of supervisors and?
Absolutely.
And then, and the arts, of course. And also?
School district.
A younger group of maybe more representative who lives here.
About the younger members of the existing group.
I think they've got representation from our age, okay? I'm hoping to get some back from our young professionals.
Cece's still a youngster.
Thank you, Supervisor.
We also...
I feel like I've known you forever, but maybe you were in high school then.
I was.
We also have a sort of a two-step kickoff process internally. We pull all of our folks together. We'll be working on the project. We have our internal kickoff meeting to make sure everybody understands as we've gone through the scope within our own company with our consultants that we're on track. Then we'd like to then take that and do a kickoff with the entity. That'd probably be Nick and then if anybody else wanted to join us to make sure that we have, spend an hour or two going through, defining, putting more definition to the steps, exactly who we're going to talk to, where we start, how do we expect to see that first month go, things like that. And we'll probably do that within a week.
Okay. And you know, we can be perfectly open to having a special meeting, that kickoff meeting you want to have, everybody wants to come or anybody wants to, or of us, we can just call it special.
Okay.
Hours.
Okay, good to know.
Then everybody knows what we're doing.
Nick may not want to know that, but I'm going to be bugging him a lot.
Any other comments? Well, thank you all. Finally, I feel like we're going to have a stable force who's going to help guide us forward. I think that's a good thing for us. We're looking forward to working with you. Okay. Under member and staff reports?
Chairman, did we do the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Okay. I was multitasking.
I didn't ask for approval of it because it was just presently. Okay. Any member reports? I want...
No.
I want to acknowledge that this is our last meeting with Rhonda. He is going off to the land of hired, which means we'll have other groups you can join now, okay? He'll be a part of the community forever. Anyway, but we want to thank you for getting us started. You've been a very stable, helpful person, very patient, very kind, people like me who are trying to figure out how to run the equipment and government meeting.
Well, it's been a pleasure, so I appreciate the opportunity. And of course, staff will continue to support as we move forward until the arts authority decides what other path they want to take.
Thank you very much and good luck to you in retirement.
Thank you.
Kind of boring out there right now, but it'll get better. Running out of things to do. Okay. So, that's great. And then, you, the cyber, the school district got going this week?
Yeah, everything's crashing. That's so many people trying to get on Zoom and everything.
I hope we can get on a fast. Okay, and then our, we have some items potentially for our next meeting. So, I asked Regina if she would mention them to us so we can start thinking about. These are some arts authority issues.
Yes, congratulations. And now that the JPA is up and running, there are some annual housekeeping-type matters such as your obligations of the Political Reform Act, hopefully the Form 700s. I know Rhonda does a good job of reaching out to those of us that have to fill out those forms. A statement of facts that was submitted to the Secretary of State when we first, when the JPA was first created and any changes, we have to issue those. Those are done. But a couple of other things in terms of insurance, I'll be chatting about or making, maybe making a presentation. And I'm not sure if there's anything that QK can, can help with that. Maybe Nick, between you and I, we can chat a little bit with QK and see if there's anything that our consultant can help with that. But that's another thing that I wanted to talk with this board about in terms of insurance. I know that comes with a price tag along with one other housekeeping item. The county agreed to pay for legal services for a year, and we've been doing this for almost about a year and a half, maybe two. And the county has agreed to that when the JPA was revised, but we're past that time. And so, I'm going to ask that just a housekeeping agenda item be placed on the agenda and I'll walk through a bigger discussion and hear some feedback and maybe make some recommendations. But that's my report, just a couple of those have money price tags on them and didn't want to catch anybody by surprise.
Under insurance, you're talking about board?
Board and JPA insurance for both. Yes, liability insurance.
Well, that sounds like an... And I'm sure we'll have our introductory report from our consultant.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything else? Well, thank you all for coming and this meeting is adjourned.
Next meeting date?
Oh, next meeting. I had it wrong last time.
September 28th?
Probably better deal our issue.
Here.
Got to get him. So, the date?
Another bite up.
Right. That looks like it's September 28th. Right. So, our next meeting is September 28.